My apologies. Good evening, Bloomfield. We're going to do our call to order. Councillor Waterhouse?
Here.
Councillor Oliver? Councillor Merritt? Councillor Mahan?
Here, can you guys please turn on your mics?
Okay. Councillor Goodwin? Councillor Debeetham Brown?
Here.
Councillor Cooper?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lloyd?
Here.
And Mayor Anthony Harrington, we're here. We do believe that there are a few other councillors that will be joining us shortly. So we'll announce them when they come on board. Next item, announcements and presentations. So this is basically providing information regarding the committees that have been selected. And for education and workforce development and community services, we have a chairperson, Michael Oliver. Would you like me to provide the individual members of each? So we have Councillor Goodwin, Councillor Waterhouse, Councillor Lloyd, and Councillor Mahan on that committee. Public health and safety, the chairperson is Todd Coop, Councillor Cooper, and Councillor Mahan, Councillor Oliver, Councillor Debeetham Brown with public health and safety. On governance and economic development, the chair is Mayor Anthony Harrington, vice-chair Todd Cooper, Councillor Cooper, Councillor Goodwin, Councillor Merritt, and Councillor Debeetham Brown. On finance, we have Chairperson Deputy Mayor Cindy Lloyd, Mayor Harrington, Councillor Waterhouse, Councillor Merritt, and Councillor Todd Cooper. Now we will move into citizen statements and petitions. So statements by members of the public may be oral or written and shall start with the speaker's name and address and shall continue for no longer than three minutes unless permitted by the mayor or councillor presiding. If you are not currently a Bloomfield resident, then you will have a maximum of two minutes. So we are calling for citizens petitions and statements. Is there anyone online that would like to participate? Okay, we're gonna throw out there once again. We are currently providing citizen statements and petitions. I do see Councillor Oliver, who has just come on board as well. Once again, for the last time, citizen statements and petitions. Seeing none? Do we have a motion close? Okay. We will now move into council business. Old business first. Item 2026-30, consider and take action regarding tax refunds.
Move acceptance?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye as well, the motion passes. Now we move into new business. Item 202631, consider and take action regarding adoption of the FY 2026-2027 budget schedule. Chapter nine, Bloomfield Town Council.
I have some questions on this.
Yes, yes.
I'm used to seeing it doesn't include council.
Councillor Oliver? I mean, I'm sorry, Councillor Merritt, you have the floor.
It doesn't, excuse me. It doesn't, this schedule doesn't include council meetings on things. I mean, I'm used to seeing a council, council meeting on the capital budget and then on different, all the different parts of the budget, the townside budget. These aren't here.
Sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat that?
I don't, I don't see council. I see staff's meetings and staff's deadlines, but I don't see the town council having any meetings here. We're gonna have a separate schedule for town council review of the budget?
By the charter.
Yeah.
We do have, we haven't scheduled a budget meeting.
Okay, fine, that's all I asked, thank you. I move acceptance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, I'm trying to press unmute as quick as possible. I couldn't hear what the deputy town manager said in response to Councillor Merritt. So once again, just if everyone could speak on the mics, because you know, the folks that are listening at home can't hear the dialogue.
My apologies, Councillor Mahan, my apologies.
Thank, thank you.
What I was saying to Councillor Mayor is that what is in the agenda packet is the budget schedule that has to be approved per the charter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, does not include the staff or the council budget schedule.
Thank you.
So my apologies, I need to, oh, I'm sorry, there's another question.
So this here, these budgets have already been adopted or formulated? Or this is just the different departments trying to put their budget together?
If, if, what do you mean if they've been formulated? These are dates, just dates by when the charter dates. Charter date and the recommended dates of all these items.
Trying to get their budgets together, okay. So this is fine. We don't have a motion on the floor, so I don't know if we're gonna continue discussion because usually it's a motion, a second, and then discussion?
I believe we, we did.
We did not.
We did not.
He made a motion, but then conversation or debate started. So it wasn't a second, I was gonna second it.
Right, so he started off with conversation, so we didn't even start off with a motion. So if we could start off with a motion, so I can have some conversation, it's okay, not a problem.
Not at all.
So you wanna go ahead and make a motion?
You can make your motion, Joe.
Acceptance.
Second.
Okay, so I just have a couple of questions, right? And I do know that by charter, there's certain things that have to be done. We have to hit certain milestones. I think I'm a little concerned though, and once again, I'm coming in this midstream, but to, I don't know what our jump-off point is because of not having an audit. Does that matter? Just a question.
Jump-off point with the budget?
Yeah.
Well, the, the budget has to get done either way.
Right, and I understand that because we have to hit those markers. But I, I look at the town budget, I try to bring it down to the basic level of my house budget, right? So if I'm not quite sure what I have, not quite sure expenditure, income, all those things, it's gonna be a little bit difficult for me now to try to put a budget together. So I think that's my concern, knowing that we have to hit these markers.
So your question's more about the audit and not the budget?
Right, knowing where we have, knowing our numbers, right? Because that's how we build a budget. We, we know that this is what we did, here's how we ended up. So now, either we're gonna tighten over here, we're gonna spend more over there in trying to put that budget together. So that's my concern.
Mr. Hill, can you speak on maybe a little bit about update on the audit? I know you.
Good evening, council, and congratulations again. Yes, in a normal world, you are absolutely correct. And less than one's forgotten, unfortunately, for four years running, the town has not had a completed audit to provide perspective for budget development, right? But the audit is not necessary for budget development except with regard to the use of unassigned fund balance. And as has been demonstrated year over year, including the current fiscal year's budget development, there is sufficient information with regard to approximate levels for unassigned fund balance going back two years. I go back two years because we're still diligently working to complete the 2024 audit. And then there's the 2025 audit, which won't be completed before the budget is developed as well. As I believe I reported at the last Finance Committee meeting, on the heels of the completion of the '24 budget, we will roll right into the '25 budget in much better shape than the '24 budget was when I joined the town with the expectation that the fiscal '25 budget will be completed before June 30th of 2026, so that we don't again cross over into being non-compliant, right? So we become delinquent on January 1st, on July 1st, we become non-compliant. So you're correct, for budget development and with regard to this, the charter schedule, we will not have the audit for that.
Can I, can I have a follow-up question?
Yes.
So, thank you. And I empathize and sympathize and all those other ayes. While we're looking at budget development, at some point in time, the council is gonna have to vote on that. And for me, I've always asked for all the information necessary to be able to make the best decision possible. So even if the audit's not done, I'm hoping that we'll have stronger numbers where we're all comfortable. The audit may not be done, but this is where we believe, and I call that a jump-off point. I'm sorry if, if, that's how I say it at work.
I understand.
What's my jump-off point? So that's my only, my only concern is the only word that I can really come up with. So once again, I do understand that we have to hit certain markers, and I'm going to go ahead and vote to, to accept this schedule. But I just really want you or everyone to understand what my concerns are, right? Based on how things are done in a normal world. And I'm, we're gonna normalize Bloomfield at some point in time.
In the not-too-distant future, and you know, I'll, if I may make one last remark, as I led with, you know, for four years running, the town has been late and/or delinquent in filing its annual audit. But we do have unaudited numbers, which is the best available information. And that is what was used to develop the current year's budget and what we will use to develop the fiscal '27 budget.
Thank you. We have a couple of questions from two councillors, so I'll start with Councillor Mahan and then Councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much, Mayor Harrington. The question that I had, I guess, is more for the deputy town manager. When can we expect the, when can we expect some dates for those meetings? I know at some point we have to approve those, those budget deliberation dates. When can we expect to see that?
If my memory recalls me correctly, I think you have those, those by January?
Okay, thank you, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do, I can understand the concern about the audits, but first of all, thank you Director Hill for your explanation about the unaudited numbers that you have and that they will be sufficient. But you know, like I think everyone else is, there may be some concern that we would like to see those completed, right? And so that we are not only on time, but in compliance with the statutory regs that require that. Yeah, but that was for me more of an introduction to a different subject. And I think that what our, your main point here is to ensure that we get these dates scheduled, right? And that we move the motion forward. So having said that, I am going to, of course, vote yes on just doing that so we can move forward and everything else that needs to be done will be done in accordance with and in concurrence with the budget schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, Councillor Mahan?
One, Mayor Harrington, I just want to thank you and thank councillor, thank you for allowing that fruitful discussion. I understand it probably wasn't pertinent to the exact topic, but it's an issue that is on the mind of many residents. So thank you for allowing that discussion to be had. And thank you councillor Debeetham Brown for raising those questions. With that, I'd like to move this question.
Is? Question has been called. So we'll go for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, the mayor votes aye and the motion passes. We will next move to item 202632, discussion and possible action regarding revision of oversized vehicle traffic ordinance sections 19 through 65 through 19 through 73.
I make a motion to adopt the updated language in the ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, any discussion?
Just a quick question. In the.
I have my hand raised.
So usually you go with the people in the chamber, then you go with the people.
We, we, we didn't see that.
Go ahead councillor Debeetham Brown. I heard your little side comment there.
I'm sorry, right, because I'm not paying attention to the screen either.
Let's go with the people in the chamber.
Sorry. So just a clarification, I see that our attorney is on the call. In the explanation at the bottom that says this streamlines the process for updating the public list. A publicly available list is more efficient and more quickly updated and further clarifies the initial intent that a public hearing is not required to add roads to the list. Is that saying, and I'm trying to get clarification, is it stating that the commission can add roads to the list without the residents having a public hearing in regards to that? Or is this just for this ordinance? Meaning that we've already talked about the ordinance, we've already voted on the ordinance, we don't need to bring it back to public hearing?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So it, it does need to go to public hearing in order to be revised. Anytime an ordinance is revised, it will have to go to public hearing. The revision is because it's our understanding that the desired process was that the traffic authority would make the initial determination as the individual most, most connected and most familiar with, you know, the, the roads and the safety aspects and all of that. And that town council would have final approval. But that a public hearing was not necessarily required to add individual roads once the traffic authority had done the full assessment and brought it to town council and town council approved the full assessment.
So that's exactly what I thought. So now we're, we're taking we're taking the will, if you, for lack of a better term, right? The will, if you will, of the residents out of the picture if we're not, if we're saying that we're not gonna have a public hearing.
So the way the ordinance was initially drafted also was not intended to require a public hearing. It's just that we received a lot of questions. And so looking at the wording of the ordinance and, you know, just reflecting on how many questions we received about the clarity, that was the impetus for clarifying. But the way it was originally written also was not intended to have a public hearing for every single specific road. Rather, the, the factors were built into the ordinance for the traffic authority to consider, if that makes sense.
It does, I, I understand the intent of streamlining the process, but I'm still concerned that the voice of the residents won't be there if there's no public hearing. So that's my only concern as to the way this is now being written. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councillor Mahan?
Thank you Attorney Moore. I think, well, thank you first, Mayor Harrington, but also Attorney Moore for those answers, councillor Debeetham Brown for your question. I, I, this is actually something that, that came up in discussion with the residents. I actually misunderstood, so I'm glad that councillor Debeetham Brown asked those questions. That, that does raise a bit of a concern for, for me as well. I understand this wasn't in the, in the original ordinance, but I, I think it's something that we should consider and actually move to, to implement for each individual road because there, there are residents that are concerned that even though the criteria is built in that they won't be able to, to voice their concerns. There might be other elements that aren't considered outside of the criteria that might be crucial to knowing in this implementation process. So I think that I would actually like to make a friendly amendment to this to add a public hearing for each street that is proposed.
Thank you.
Hope I can get a second?
I'm waiting for him to. I do not.
The maker of the motion has to.
I do not, I would like to ask if we can have clarification because you were not here, of course, when this was implemented. And for Councillor Mahan to understand the process better, there is an extensive vetting process that comes from the residents and their significant concerns that even brings it to that level to be considered by the traffic authority in addition to extensive law enforcement initiatives, law enforcement details, traffic details, and a number of other things that happened before a street is even considered and brought to the traffic authority. So if Director Coleman, could you speak to that a little bit? So that they better understand. I know councillor Mahan was with us at the time that we implemented this, but it's not a kind of quick, in a silo type of decision that is made. So if we could, for the public, help them understand how we get to this point where a street has been vetted, has had law enforcement initiatives, has had observation, and then gets the decision from the traffic authority to come to this point, that would be appreciated.
Good evening, council. Yes, there is a long vetting process where the, where it is proposed. There is the analysis conducted by the traffic authority, analysis conducted by the Department of Public Works is reviewed by staff. There is neighborhood involvement. That occurs at a number of steps while it may not be a formal public hearing. No recommendation is made at any staff level until we have had very extensive conversations with the affected residents that may be impacted by the decision.
So thank you for that. I was around back in the stone ages when we talked about the traffic calming, the policy and everything about that, so I do have some history there. However, I'm still at the point where I believe having a public hearing would be beneficial to the residents of the town of Bloomfield. Not saying that all the steps that we're taking prior to is not sufficient, but making the space needed during a public hearing, I think, wouldn't take much away from us at all. While I do agree with the ordinance, I, I can't support it if there's not a public hearing attached to it. I just want to be very clear on where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more questions from our councillors, Councillor Cooper and then Councillor Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as, as I believe, these traffic calming efforts are also, correct me if I'm wrong, Chair Lloyd, these also can come from citizens. Am I, am I correct?
Correct, and often emanate out of public being brought up in a public safety committee.
Right, and so they do, the public does have an opportunity prior to this even being brought before the traffic commission. And so, you know, there's ample work that's gone in. Our citizens are involved, they're engaged. And so oftentimes, and just in my experience, having been on the committee, know that they bring these issues to the forefront. So I, I would say that as far as a public hearing, I don't know if it's necessary. Yes, it may be a nice to have, but also what I would not want to do is MP the commission in fast-tracking by adding another layer to this process and what we do. Folks are well informed, they know what's going on. It's, you know, to just put more in front of what is an action that is actually very helpful to them, I think, is, is maybe a detriment. But there, you know, of course, there are other opinions, but for me, as the way this is written, I think it's improvement on what the, the process previously was and hence why it's been written in this fashion. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just like, you know, for one additional, if, if in fact, any of these traffic calming initiatives are funded with lots of money, which is state money, there is a required public hearing process that the staff conducts during the review process. And it's a formal public hearing because we are utilizing state funds for those projects.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mahan, this will be your third crack at this. Generally try to limit it to two, but go ahead. Councillor Mahan?
Sorry, I believe this is my second, Mayor Harrington. I don't recall commenting on this three times, but I usually review the meetings afterwards, so I'll, I'll double-check. In the case of what you're saying, triple-check. But, you know, I, I, I understand the point of, you know, us having, we're going to have formal hearings for any instances in which we're using lots of funds. So I don't think that it should be a problem for us to then to formally include that in this, in this ordinance. It's, it doesn't seem like it's going to add some hindrance to solving the issues that our residents are looking to get solved as councillor Cooper pointed out, because it's something that is already happening. So what I'm hoping that we can do is also include that public hearing when it involves our municipal funds. You know, this issue was raised to me by a resident. They were concerned that they, and they're still concerned that they're not going, not gonna be able to have their voice heard. And, you know, our residents deserve more opportunities, not less, to weigh in. At the end of the day, this is their government. We're here at their service and we're, we're here due to their blessing. So we have to, we have to make sure that they're, that they're completely involved in all steps of the process. I, I do want to put that motion forward again to have a public hearing included in this ordinance for the sake of our residents.
Councillor Merritt?
Yeah, I, I, it doesn't seem, if, if somebody wants a public hearing, it doesn't seem like that big a deal to, to put it in here at some time. There's no big cost to having a public hearing, just may delay it a couple of weeks. Is that true?
Councillor, I am not gonna judge the decision of the council on whether or not they want to hold a public hearing.
Okay, well, I, does anybody have any?
I, it's not a big deal, let's just do it. I'll second the motion. I can't? All right.
It's the maker of the motion has to accept.
Oh, who made the motion? You did?
No, I didn't. So, for the reasons that there was opportunity for councillors who were here within the last year that this was approved, to make this proclamation or request, and I don't recall that it was. And as well, for the reasons of a very strong advocate in traffic calming and traffic safety, being Lori Julian, speaking for her neighborhood, as well as others, expressing extreme frustration at the length, I'm talking about over the weekend on my phone. Extreme frustration at the length of the process to get anything like this done is another impetus for my, uh, rejecting your friendly amendment, although I appreciate it being made. So councillor Mahan, thank you, but I do not accept that friendly amendment.
Lori was the reason why I put it forward. She's the one that reached out to me to put it forward. So it's funny that you mentioned that councillor Lori.
We'll, we'll compare notes after the meeting. I'll send you the text.
I'll let her know to reach out to you.
Indeed, thank you. And I've also referred her to the new chair of public safety so that we can get back on track, whatever she's looking to achieve on behalf of her neighbors and friends. Thank you.
We call the question?
Call the question?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed?
Nay.
To end any abstentions? Okay, the mayor votes aye and the motion passes. We move now to item 2026-33. Discussion and possible action regarding the proposed ArbeLa development, development tax abatement agreement.
I'd like to move that we, uh, accept the tax abatement with ArbeLa at Blue Hills.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay.
Second.
And I, I believe we will have discussion from Mr. Coleman.
Not discussion, but I'd just like to, to, um, request that the council, uh, actually read the resolution that's at the end of the, uh, of the memo that was received from, uh, Attorney Crumbie. Uh, so that, uh, we need that, so that it's done, done effectively and properly where it says, whoever it is, I move to approve the proposed tax fixing agreement as replicated in the agenda packet and direct the interim town manager to duly execute such agreement. If some, if the individual making the motion could make that particular motion. Thank you very much.
That's a lot for me to remember at this second. Could you repeat that, please, John?
Yes, sir. I, councillor Oliver, moved to approve the proposed tax fixing agreement as replicated in the agenda packet and direct the interim town manager to duly execute such agreement.
Please make that motion. I'd like to move the motion that John just stated.
Is, is that sufficient, Attorney Crumbie?
It is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I didn't believe I heard any, any abstentions? Okay. The mayor is aye, so the motion passes. Great, great, great. Yes.
Awesome.
We move now to, uh, item 202634.
That's going to be in executive session.
Considering take action regarding police department's contract ratification, which we will, uh, discuss in, uh, executive session. And so now, can I have a motion?
Second.
All right, okay. All those in favor?
You gotta announce who's going in.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion to go in executive session with town council, town attorneys, the interim TM, Director Finance, and Attorney Bill Ryan.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
And HR.
And HR. So per freedom of information, excuse me, this will be a discussion concerning the police department contract ratification. So at this point, everyone else, you are free to leave. We thank you for your presence.
You can come back in an hour after, right?
Is there another link or do I stay in this link?
Uh, stay, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, to exit.
Coming out of executive session.
Exit.
Oh, he's not on yet. He's not even on yet.
It says the webinar is being livestreamed.
I'd like to make a motion to exit executive session.
Second.
And return to regular session. There was a second.
Yes.
That was councillor Oliver, I bel, I mean councillor Cooper.
Who's second? Who? I don't know.
Second.
Councillor Cooper.
That helps.
Councillor Cooper.
I don't know.
What?
Okay, and then Cooper's second? I'd like to make a motion that we ratify the, uh, police officers' agreement.
A second?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
We, we're not done.
I'm sorry. There was a motion, there was a second.
We need a vote.
Ms. Mayor?
Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, if at all possible.
Okay. Great, I'm trying to find my first page.
Just look around.
Thank you.
Call it, just look around.
Councillor Waterhouse?
Yes.
Councillor Oliver?
Yes.
Councillor Merritt? Councillor Mahan?
Aye.
Councillor DeBeetham Brown?
Made the motion.
Oh. Councillor Cooper? Councillor Cooper?
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Lloyd?
Absolutely, yes.
And Mayor Anthony Harrington, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you very much, Bloomfield.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Paper, please.
And a happy Thanksgiving.